Good evening again. I have three things to report to our community. First, the Steel Centennial Celebration was on May 21st. It was an amazing walk down memory lane with exhibits and photos of former and current families, legislators, and sharing from 100 years of the school being in existence here in Baldwin. There were student performances, entertainment, food. There was Super Steel t-shirts, which I thank them for putting the letter S because that's my initial, so I appreciated that. Every Steel student contributed to the beautiful mosaic that is at the entrance to the school. If you have not had an opportunity to see it and you're a Steel parent, definitely take a look. If not, you can see what it looks like on their website because they have a picture of it on Steel's website. Next week, we have two amazing events coming up, and this one you may want to take out a pad and a piece of paper. The first is our high school wind symphony is performing their commissioned concert, doing a commissioned concert. So, all of the work that they are performing is work that was written specifically for Baldwin's Wind Symphony. And they are performing Monday, June 13th at 7:30 at Adelphi University. Tickets are $5. We're looking to make this a big Baldwin bash, so if you have not had an opportunity to get your tickets, believe they're available at the high school, it's definitely going to be an extravaganza. The concert's going to be a highlight of 10 years of commissioned works, and there is a flyer at the table in the back of the auditorium. And Tuesday, June 14th, our High School Art Honor Society will be honored by the staff of Northwell Health in Valley Stream, which is formerly Franklin General, for creating nine calming murals for the hospice wing. There'll be a special ceremony and a luncheon for the students and their families. As Baldwin residents, you know that we have an amazing affiliation with Northwell Health, and this is just a continuation of that relationship where our kids created these murals and they are going to be hanging up in the hospital. So, if you have anybody that's in the hospital or you have an opportunity to just stop by and see the murals, they're wonderful. So, those are just some of the things that have either happened or are coming these next couple of weeks. Once again, our students really do us proud.
Okay. So, at this time, we're going to open the floor for comments, questions, and concerns from our community members. We assume that many of you are here to express concerns or inquire about our recent hiring decision. So, for many of you, this may be your first board meeting, and so I'd like to, as I do every meeting, go over the ground rules. So, to ensure that everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so, and that this comment session takes place in an orderly manner, we ask that the following protocol is adhered to. Number one, when you come to the podium, there's a sign-up sheet before speaking or while you guys are standing in line, you can pass it down the way. Please sign in. After signing in, when is your turn to speak? Please clearly state your name and address before asking your comment or asking your question or making your comment. We ask that you do so in the event that we may need to answer your question at a later date or follow up with additional information. Each community member will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, one-time shot only. And as you're speaking, we have a timer. Mrs., our district clerk, Mary Hobbs, has the timer. I'm not going to be rude and cut you off at the knees exactly at three minutes, but what I will ask is that when you are notified that your three minutes is up, please finish your sentence so that we can move to the next person. Please direct your question, comment, and concern to me. I'm the person who chairs the meeting. That's, I'm asking for a lot, right? And please be advised that we will not be able to respond to questions concerning matters of specific personnel and/or issues that pertain to a specific child. While we respect everyone's First Amendment right to express themselves, our expectation is that the community members do so in a civilized and a respectful manner. We, the district, will not allow community members to utilize this forum to publicly criticize current or prospective employees. Please be guided accordingly as you state your comments. And you might see me do a lot of this, this, and this. The gentleman at the end is Chris Finator. He's our attorney. He's here to advise the board as to what questions we can answer or can't answer. Okay? So, I thank you in advance for your cooperation. Ms. Hobbs, are you ready? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Dr. Shawnee Bruno. I live at 1624 Berkeley Avenue in Baldwin. So, a little bit of this is prepared, a little bit is impromptu. Hello, friends, neighbors, students, strangers, school administrators, board trustees. I'm here to speak on behalf of the opposition to the Baldwin High School principal hire. I can say that. On June 1st, I started a petition on change.org to this effect. Since then, over 500 people have signed on in support to block Katerina Lafregola's appointment to reopen and reopening the search for a most suitable, qualified, successful, appropriate, experienced candidate. I don't want to use my time, but thank you very much. If you've read and chosen to sign on to the petition, people out there, I thank you. Your children, thank you. Your fellow neighbors who pay property taxes, thank you. We all know that the quality of our schools are directly connected to the quality of our school district, and the leadership in our high school is probably as important, at least as important, as any other position. For our children, it's their last stop before college or career, and so we know with the adulations of Susan Norris, beautiful, beautiful work that she's done in that position for the last 15 years, we see how critical that position is and the work that she does, and also how much we appreciate the work that she does in that position. So, as well as a Baldwin resident, a parent of two Baldwin school district children, I hold four university degrees, and I'm not saying this to be boastful, including the PhD. I'm saying this because I come from a background, single-parent household, financially insecure sometimes, but never wealthy, and I know as a person of color, as a girl, that college preparation is extremely important. There are a lot of obstacles, a lot of impediments to academic success, to professional achievement, and having a proper preparation in the high school is pivotal. And if that's not there, our students, our children, will not go on to the Ivy League as they've been doing. They won't go on to regular four-year schools, two-year schools. The opposition that I hold is that this person has only been principal over a vocational school, a failed vocational school, and I'm not, I have a run-on sentence here.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on one second. Need to cut you off. What President indicated at the start and the superintendent did as well, we're not going to entertain discussion and questions about specific personnel.
Okay. So, I'm going to talk about the district and the community and the children that are dear to my heart.
Our time is...
So, what they need, so what they need is, I heard you the first time. So, what they need is not what the person who may be replacing Principal Norris is capable of providing for them. So, you can go on to the New York City Department of Education website. You can see the snapshots, and you can get the information for yourself. The data is there, the numbers are there, and you do the math. I have one question, and I haven't stopped, so this is, I'm still completing my sentence, my very long run-on sentence.
No, no.
I have one question embedded in my statement.
No, no.
And that is...
No.
Is there something that I and at least 509 other people are missing? Is there something that completely counteracts, cancels out the data, the numbers? Is there something that completely washes that out and gives it no credence? And I know that, and I don't mean, no, does that person, is that person out of order as much as I? That's all I want to know.
You're both out of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Kugelmas, 979 Van Buren Street. We passed the budget, which is code for another tax increase, the full 2%. It would have been 6%. You remember the 7666 plan? This is the fourth year of the 27% tax increase that the state stopped you from doing. We closed two schools and enrollment has shrunk. Why are we paying $27 million for 500 less students?
Hold on one second. The people, I understand, but can we just, I know, but we need to keep it quiet, please.
Hey, guys, please, please, we trying to get through this, please. Go ahead, Mr. Kugelmas.
Thank you. Why are we paying $27 million for five, more, for 500 less students? High salaries and benefits is the short answer, which rob our buildings, our program, transportation, and our community. That's the fault of the board. The teachers cost us, on average, $150,000, that's salary and benefits, for their nine-month work year. Administrators cost a lot more. Our students cost us $27,000 per student. Okay. Tonight, I'd like to discuss the administration's ineptitude because it takes a lot of people to cost us that much. The misallocation of resources, another cause of our very expensive but very average suburban school district. Our primary school classrooms are at capacity, 25 to 28 students per teacher. That's a burden on the elementary school teachers, the gifted students, and the slow learners, all students, because one teacher can only do so much. By contrast, look at the enrollment levels at classes at high school. Three-quarters of the classes are under-enrolled, half are grossly under-enrolled. Regular subjects with class sizes of 5 to 15 students. Our elementary school teachers would love classes those sizes. For years, I complained about the foreign language class sizes, but it's the same pattern with English, social studies, math, and science, too. When you have class sizes, eight to 15 students, it costs us two teachers to do the job of one. Each additional teacher costs us $150,000. If the union made us do that, it would be called feather bedding. But our own underperforming administration is the culprit. For every teacher eliminated in the high school level, we can put at least three teacher assistants in our primary schools or in our high school classes. The children need the smaller teacher-student ratio, not the young adults in high school. You're doing it exactly wrong. Here are the numbers. Social studies, 15. These are the class sizes, 15, 14, 15, 14, 12, 5, 6, 3, 9, 15. And the elementary school teachers would love these class sizes. 9, 13, 17, 16, 15, 12, 16, 16, 15, 15, 17. Now, we're getting into some...
Okay. Your three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you. I'll time any second commentary. Takes a lot of ineptitude to cost us $27,000 a student when the rest of the country does it at $10,000 a student.
All right, Mr. Kugelmas, your time is up.
David Welsh, 1028 Ardmore Road, Baldwin. I'm going to read you a quote from the New York Post, which I did get online. It's not Twitter, okay? And the Post may be considered just a little bit better than the Inquirer, but still, there's been denials from the other side. Last year, de Blasio and Schools Chancellor Carmen Farina kept Lafregola in the driver's seat.
Sir, I would have to stop you. We're not going to entertain discussion about individual employees in this district or folks that are going to be employees. This is not a forum for bashing employees or prospective employees. We're not entertaining this discussion, sir.
You don't understand. This is a question to the school board on how they could actually consider this person as a candidate to begin with. Okay? I want to know from the school board how they can actually, because they are the ones who hire.
Again, we're not going to be entertaining discussion about individual personnel in the district.
And then they have the ineptitude of, actually, there's probably better words, but I'm trying not to curse. They have the gall to hold a special election after, on the same night of the school board elections, to vote the principal, the new principal. I'm not going to talk about her anymore. I don't think I have to. So, how do you think you have the gall? I wouldn't have even mentioned that except the superintendent did, that you were already in discussions about that in December.
We paid the tax. We paid the salary.
And that's great because now you got a whole year to let this die down. It's what you always do. I have argued with the school board on many things, but you don't, you may not do things illegally, but you do them wrong. And you should be ashamed of yourselves. Susan Norris said something about the high school being the flagship of the community, and you just hired the captain of the Titanic.
Good evening, fellow residents, board, and community. I was optimistic. Oh, my name is Francine Holt, 2081 Milburn Avenue, Baldwin, New York. I was optimistic. I really honestly wanted to give this whole principal a chance, until she stood in that classroom or that library and said 10, 10 racist issues. Not one, she said 10. And I, I, I'm trying, no, I don't care.
Ma'am, I'm going to stop you. We're not talking about personnel here.
Well, she just talked about it, so I'm going to talk about it. So, call Popeye, I'm going to talk about it. I'm sorry. No, I know you're their attorney. I know you're the attorney, but I'm going to say something about it. She just had a meeting. We, what, okay, okay, I respect you. When are we going to be able to talk about it?
This is not the forum for it.
I didn't ask you that. I didn't ask you that. I asked you a question. When will the community be able to voice our opinion about this? Because I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. After tonight, I'm going to go knock on doors, and I'm going to say, "Our board elected a principal who has 10 issues with racism, hires teachers who post nude on social media." What? What? And does not have one, one record of success. Where is her record of success? She don't have any. She was, okay, she was a principal, she was a teacher before. Where is her record of success?
Again, we're not talking about individual personnel.
Okay, you're not talking about it. I am.
This is not the forum for it.
I'm asking you, what is the forum? What's the forum? You're the attorney, Mr. Attorney. When, when can us, the community, come to you to talk about the issues in our community where we pay taxes, about the issues of our school, and the concerns for our children?
Excuse me. I'm going to make a comment.
Okay, good.
But you need to be quiet. If you want to hear from the board, then let me speak. Okay. First thing is, we were all in that classroom, and I will not allow you to say that she said racist comments, so that rumor can start. We were all in there and you were in there.
Okay, let me, let me...
So, number one, excuse me. Let me finish my sentences, then you can go on. You wanted to hear from the board.
Okay, go ahead.
You're going to hear from me.
Okay, go ahead.
So, first things first, I have dealt with racism. For you to say that right now, I take offense for you to make false comments about racism. There was no comment about racism.
I didn't make a comment about racism. I said what she said, ma'am.
There was no comment made about racism in the room upstairs. That's number one. That's number one. Number two, in terms of our decision, I'll speak for myself, not for everyone else on the board, there was a thorough process, regardless of what you all thought, there was a thorough process done.
I'm not saying that.
And I stand firm by the decision, even with all that was said, that you all believe was said. If you want the Post to be your main source of news, then let that be it.
She just said it. The Post didn't report racism.
That's number one. Okay, so now the conversation is over.
The Post did not report racism, she did.
Now, the conversation is over. Then you will not hear from the board if this is how we're going to have a conversation because we can't do it this way. Now, the conversation is over. This is why the board chooses not to speak because now you all are just loud. Okay. Yes, absolutely, 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 absolutely.
My name is Emmy Fundaberk. I'm from the Long Island Youth Foundation. I'm a Baldwin resident. I live at 2363 Grand Avenue. I just had something like to say, and I do apologize. We came tonight because we wanted to say thank you to the board and also the high school personnel. This year, we were allowed to come in. We brought a grant to Baldwin School District, and we were able to do a girls' empowerment program. We had approximately 45 to 50 girls participate in the program. The program is built on the six pillars of character education. The girls had a great time, and we tried to infuse part of the pillars of education into a project that they would be able to complete, and the girls put together a fashion show where we had about 55 to 60 participants. We held it at the Baldwin High School, and it was visited by Assemblywoman Earlene Huber along with Senator Michael Vendetti. He had a chance to speak with the kids, talk with them. They have been invited to come to Albany and speak about the program, as well as some of the kids were selected to be on the Nassau County DA Renee Fleischer's heroine task force. So, I just wanted to say thank you to, you know, everyone for giving us the chance. We're hopeful that in February, September, we have put money aside for the program to continue in September, and it would go, we just did a pilot for three months, and we're hopeful to bring the program again this September with the children, with the students, and they just wanted to say thank you as well, so let them talk.
Okay. Hi, my name is Brianna. I'm a student at Baldwin High School. Just like she said, thank you guys so much for allowing us to participate and giving us the opportunity to just really meet new people and find our voice, not just in the community, but amongst ourselves, too. And thank you again so much.
I'm Janae Allo. I'm also a student at Baldwin High School. Like they both said, thank you. The program really showed us that we can work together without all the competition amongst females and everything, and it really helped us because, I don't know, like, like I said, we worked together. It was real good. Even we had our little differences, but we worked through it. And yeah, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Lance Williams.
Did you sign in? Okay, thank you.
I'll sign in. I live at 832 Grand Terrace Avenue. I have a child in the Baldwin School District, but also for me, I am an alum of Baldwin Senior High School. I graduated with both my regular high school diploma and my Regents diploma. So, believe me when I tell you, this issue of this principal, who I guess we can't name here, whatever, means a lot to me. From what I've seen, I've, I signed a petition about her, and I read a number of comments from teachers and former administrators, even a JV coach who worked with her, worked under her at Automotive High School. Their names, or they've signed their names and they've attributed their stories. I've seen the letter that came from, I believe it was the district via the superintendent, that only had, you know, vague references to people who supported her, and based on the quality snapshot, it seems that she has a very low trust factor on the community, and the people didn't believe in her. So, I'm very curious why we need to invest in her and why we, as the Baldwin community, need to believe in her. Am I just talking or? I'm also curious to know why comments were getting removed from the district Facebook Because I put, I put a number of comments on the unions, on the school district page that were just links to articles. I didn't disparage the woman in any way. I didn't say anything negative about her. No, I just posted information, and one of the things I saw on two of the posts is, "We're just here to have dialogue and have information." I see, you know, the lawyer's here, you know, he's here to say what you can answer, what you can't answer, and, you know, some, you know, there's some here that are acting as if you're sitting on thrones and you don't want to address us like we're plebeians or something. Well, when can we have this conversation? Because obviously, this means a lot to people in this room and the 509 people who signed a petition. There needs to be a conversation about this that happens before we decide to vote everyone back in or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, baby.
Van White, 35 Maplewood Court. I have two kids in the school district, one in Lenox, my last year, and one in the high school. This is for the attorney. Now, when you said we can't discuss, is it discussion a two-way street?
We don't discuss matters of individual personnel in public, and most boards of edu, all boards of education often, they don't, as a matter of policy procedure, they don't do it. This is not a forum for that.
No, my portion was discussion. It's a two-way street.
Correct.
So, when people come in here to mention the principal, you stop them because they're not saying a word. So, it's not a discussion. It's comments that people need to speak. As I spoke to some people regarding transparency, over the years, this board, this administration, from Scannell, from jumping from the board to assistant superintendent, from assistant superintendent to superintendent, then to retirement, then to Dr. Kami, with a little paint on her background, you know, this, this...
Sir, again, we're not talking about individual people.
But what I'm saying is, the board, we here, listen, if it wasn't for this principal tonight, I'd be home watching the Cavs and the Warriors. Half of these people up there would be watching that. So, we come here for answers. Now, not from you, from the board, from Dr. Kami. Give us a reason to believe. People say, "I hear, I see stuff on Facebook." Got to trust the board.
So, sir, what I would suggest to you, then make an appointment to see Dr. Kami. She has an open door policy. Come in and make an appointment to talk to her. But this is not a public forum for criticism, you know, and a forum to bash and to bully the district.
No, we're not, we're not bashing, we're not criticizing. I see people talking about, "Trust the board. Trust their decision." I've been married 21 years, going to 22 next month. Sometimes I make decisions, my wife don't trust me, but she still loves me. You know, so just because, you know, we voted you in doesn't mean we have to go with everything you say. We just need to tell us why. Why is she so special? Why is she so special that, you know what? She's going to be it. And like I said, the thorough investigation on her, not investigation, a thorough process of hiring her. No one, now you're talking about 22, 24, 25 people on this panel, from teachers to custodians to the board, nobody's saying, "Hmm, let's think about this." So, everybody in unison is like, "This is the person we need to hire with all," not all the baggage, with some of the things that we see. Forget about the Post, the report card, the report card, that's all we need. We just need, okay, this is why we did it. Now, whether we like it or not... Now, whether or not we like it or not, we have an answer, but we're not getting answers. We're getting, can't discuss it right now. Now, once the board is, once this meeting is over, so it's not a forum for the board, can we have an answer then?
You have an opportunity, anytime you want to talk to any board member, superintendent, you know, this is just not the forum to publicly talk about individual personnel decisions and hires.
Can, can, wait, okay, after the board, can they, can they speak, or will they still use that? I can't say it.
Board of Education, our members of the community, they're free to speak, just like anybody else is free to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much. And what's your name again? I know I haven't come to many board meetings. This is my first one this year. I came to ones in the past, and I'd never seen you before.
I've been here a couple times. The first name is Chris, and the last name is Venator, V-E-N-A-T-O-R.
Good evening. My name...
One, one second. I just want to do a time check. So, my district clerk told me that we had, that this session ends at 10:10. But since I have, I'm going to do this. Since we have the three people here, those are the last three people, including Ms. Barbara. And then, if we still need time, we'll have a second session after we get through our business, and we'll invite other people to come up, okay?
All right, good evening. My name is Barbara Guile, and I'm the grandmother of a student in the Baldwin school system. I'm at 1595 Berkeley Avenue. I have to say that I'm very disappointed tonight. And I'm very disappointed because I'm looking at what's happening here from the perspective of not a grandmother, but 48 years in the New York school system. And what I see here reminds me so much of what I was glad to leave in the city. Baldwin was not an easy pick for us. My daughter scouted and reviewed schools, school districts, and towns on, out here on Island before we moved here from the city. And one of the main points of her coming to Baldwin was the school system. And I have great concern about what I'm seeing. Now, I'm not going to address the candidate who is now the new principal, but I am going to address the board. Where was the openness of the process? You knew, and Ms. Kami, Kami, I'm sorry, you said upstairs that you knew since December that the principal of the high school was retiring. So, since December, there was no open of the process to this board, to this audience, a board meeting, that...